Okay, we'll do a sound check for everyone. Hello, I am Jane Callahan, a member of the League of Women Voters of Rochester. I would like to welcome all of you tonight, the candidates, the audience, and those viewing at a later time, to this forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters Rochester. We'd also like to thank our generous partners of tonight's forum, The Rochester Post Bulletin, The Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, and the Rochester Public Library for their help. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer organization organized at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government, while we as a league do study and take stands on issues we never support or oppose political parties or their candidates. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of LWV Rochester or any partner or sponsor of this forum, and the sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. It is one of, it is our purpose in sponsoring this forum to provide you with an educational opportunity to hear candidates discuss face-to-face issues that are important to you. Tonight's questions have come from LWV Rochester, The Post Bulletin, The Chamber of Commerce, and members of the live audience, plus questions have been submitted earlier. You are welcome to submit as many written questions as you'd like on the note cards provided. Just hold up the cards as you finish them, and a volunteer will collect them throughout the forum. If you are watching, oh, that's, and we don't have that tonight, all questions are reviewed by League of Women Voters volunteers. Questions that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature will not be used. Given our format, your questions must relate to both candidates. Questions that fall in the same general area may be consolidated to allow the moderator to cover as much as possible during our short time. We appreciate questions that are forward-looking rather than of the past. If an answer is unclear, feel free to submit a follow-up question or contact the candidate after the forum. Cards become the property of the League of Women Voters Rochester. As there is never enough time to cover all the issues in our limited time and setting such as this, we may not get to all the questions submitted. Please feel free to contact the candidate's campaign headquarters directly if your questions are not addressed tonight. We'd like to thank all the candidates for running for office, for offering to serve your community, and for the enormous time, dedication, and commitment that running and serving demand. We encourage our members as individuals, as we encourage each of you, to get involved in your community and the political party of your choice. Let us begin. Welcome to tonight's forum, which features candidates for the Rochester City Council Member representing Ward Six. Candidates for this seat are Dan Doring and Mark Schluessner. We, each candidate, will have two minutes to offer an opening statement. The candidates will then respond in turn to questions provided by League of Women Voters Rochester, this evening's partners, and by the public, which were submitted in advance and here tonight. Candidates will have one minute each to answer. The candidates will then have two minutes each to make a closing statement. I would like to suggest to the candidates that you make your answer as succinct as possible. It isn't necessary to use the entire time for your answer. When your time is up, you may finish your sentence, but you must conclude your answer. Each candidate also has three 30-second rebuttal cards. These can be used at any point after each candidate has answered the question. Only one rebuttal card may be used per question. Please put the card in the basket after you have used it. I would like to remind the audience to remain silent during the forum, hold your applause until the end of the forum, and to turn off all electronic devices. The timekeepers tonight are League of Women Voters Rochester Members Jan Strand and Ashley Nierling. Questions will be screened by League of Women Voter Rochester Members Kathy Mageline and Dee Voldahl. Asking questions will be Randy Peterson from The Post Bulletin and Olivia Kloster from The Chamber of Commerce. The candidates have drawn numbers to determine the order of their opening and closing statements, and candidate Mark Schluessner will begin with his opening statement. Candidate.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters Rochester, Chamber of Commerce, and of course, The Post Bulletin, and everybody who's made it here tonight, along with Dan. Thanks for coming. I'm Mark Schluessner, longtime resident of Rochester. I was born and raised here. Went to Pinewood, Willow, and Mayo, for those keeping track of the high schools. And I've been a long-term public official. I grew up in a household where we struggled financially, so I understand what it's like to be in a housing fragile environment. It was a family of four. There was my three brothers, or my two brothers and my sister, my father and my mother. My father was a policeman here in Rochester for 30 years before he retired from the Rochester Police Department. And my mother worked at the Kaler and housekeeping when she wasn't busy with us four kids at home. I graduated, after I graduated from high school, I worked at Mayo Clinic for a while, then I served my country in the military. I was active duty for two and a half years, National Guard five and a half years, and it was during the time of Desert Storm, so it was an interesting time in our country's history. What I bring with me is a lot of experience in leadership. I've served on numerous boards of directors. I've been previously elected to the Rochester Public School Board, and in my role at my employer, which is Mayo Clinic, I do lead other engineers as well. I've had a lot of education in the area of governance, strategic thinking, policymaking, and understand what it takes to lead a group of people on a multitude of levels. There are times that when you lead people on a lower level, it takes a completely different style when leading people in a governance position. With my background in mathematics and my experience having served on the public schools, I very well understand large budgets, complex situations, and numbers. With that, I'll end there. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate. And now for his opening statement, Dan Doring.
Thank you, Mark, for being here, and thank you all for being here as well. I want to begin by expressing my gratitude to the League of Women Voters, The Chamber of Commerce, The Post Bulletin, the Public Library for hosting this forum, especially on this day of national voter registration. I've been a part of the Rochester community now for 14 years. This is where my wife and I raised our son, purchased our first home, and I have developed a deep, loving connection with this city. I am dedicated to ensuring that Rochester remains a fantastic place to live, where everyone can thrive, irrespective of their race, class, gender, or ability. Throughout my time in Rochester, I've engaged deeply with the community. I've served as a mentor for Boulder Options, been on the Family Promise Board of Directors, coached youth baseball, directed the Rochester High School mountain bike team, and performed at the Rochester Civic Theater. I also currently volunteer twice a month at the Dorothy Day House to serve those who are experiencing homelessness. It's my wife and I's Friday date night. I have also been advocate, active, very active, in advocating for affordable housing for those who are experiencing homelessness and for those who are differently abled in our community. These experiences, combined with my professional background, have prepared me to be an effective leader on the city council. I'm a good listener, collaborative, skilled at making well-informed decisions. I routinely manage budgets and navigate complex financial matters. I successfully guided two nonprofits through the global pandemic. I'm equipped to work with people holding diverse viewpoints to find solutions, always prioritizing the needs of those I represent over my personal agenda. Thank you so much for being here, and I'm excited for this evening.
Thank you. That concludes the opening remarks, and we will use a grid to always reverse the order. So Dan Doring will speak first on the first question, which is from the League of Women Voters. According to the recent ALIS study released by the United Way of Olmsted County, "One of every three households in our county is unable to meet their basic needs, which may include housing, food, childcare, transportation, healthcare, and technology. In what areas will that information impact how you make decisions?" Candidate Doring.
Each and every way, to be completely honest with you. My professional career is about serving the public, and serving the public in a way where everyone's, with the goal that everyone's needs are met, regardless of what those needs might be. Whether that's housing, whether that's food insecurity, whether that's worrying about paying electric bills, whether that's paying for healthcare. I have been a champion of people's human rights, and those for me are all human rights. So that will inform the way that I help to shape policy on the city council. I will strive to make more affordable housing in this community, and I look forward to talking about that more this evening. I look forward to helping those who are experiencing homelessness in our community, and I look forward to talking more about that this evening. I works towards, I'm looking forward to striving to address food insecurity, because I think we can address it as a city issue. So I look forward to discussing all these things if I'm elected to the city council.
Thank you. Candidate Schluessner.
Great question, and I agree, this is an extremely important area for our city. You know, having grown up, like I'd said in my opening statement, I've been there, I understand the situation, it's difficult, and every aspect of that study needs to be addressed in our community. And the way that I plan on addressing it, you know, once I'm elected to the city council is, it gets back to understanding the complexities of the budget and helping in the areas that help these constituents having these financial difficulties. You know, seeing where we can keep prices down, possibly prices under control, from a government point of view, which there's not a lot of direct space there, but we can keep fees down, we can hopefully keep some utility costs down, and we can just be judicious with the way that we spend money, so we're conscious of when we get into the budget season, they need to increase costs to the people at that point in time.
Thank you. The next question will be from The Chamber of Commerce, and we'll go first to Mark Schluessner.
How would you assess the current business environment in both downtown and greater Rochester? As a city council member, what specific action would you take to create a more thriving economic environment that attracts and supports business growth?
A great question, and I'd like to tell you, phrase it, because the climate downtown is certainly a different climate than it is out on the outskirts of the city. I've, you know, when I worked in downtown pre-pandemic, we started to have a vibrant community, but COVID unfortunately wasn't very good for our downtown area, and I think a lot of businesses, quite honestly, are struggling. You know, and with Mayo moving everybody home from a remote work point of view, the patients haven't been able to keep the businesses afloat in the downtown area. So I think the city council needs to be very conscious of that and be conscious of how we do taxation and policy in that space. The businesses on the outskirts of town are a little bit more fortunate, there's a lot of good things going on in the northwest. I think it's because prices are generally cheaper from an operational cost point of view out there.
Thank you. Candidate Doring.
Yeah, thank you for that question. I get asked this a lot while I'm out canvassing Ward Six, wondering what's happening to our downtown section. Fortunately for Ward Six, businesses seem to be pretty strong in our neighbor, in our neighborhood of the city. In regards to downtown, I think that the city council has a role in incentivizing businesses to be down there. I know that moving a mass workforce from the downtown corridor is problematic for small businesses, but I think we have the opportunity to provide tax breaks and provide tax breaks to, especially BIPOC communities and small business owners, to draw them in. Again, this is also about affordable housing for me. People want to live close to where they work. So if we really want to address downtown business, we want to make sure that housing is affordable near downtown.
Thank you. The next question will come from The Post Bulletin, and Dan Doring will speak first.
Rochester voters approved a tax, a sales tax extension last year, with the majority of a new $50 million vitality fund being dedicated to address housing needs. What do you see as the priority for the city-funded housing efforts?
That's, is that for me first?
Yes, candidate Doring first.
Okay.
And then Mark Schluessner.
Yep. Again, I think we need to incentivize infill housing in Rochester. We need to create more housing density, and I think the city has a role in doing so by actually implementing some of the things in the UDC, which allows for infill development. I think that we could also, as a city council, realize what affordable housing is. I understand that that barrier of some of those monies allocated to help with affordable housing priced those homes at somewhere around $380,000. When I talk to residents in Ward Six, they don't view that as affordable housing. I much prefer the median household income, or median household in priced home in our community at around $288,000 as a top ceiling to what might be affordable.
Thank you. Candidate Schluessner.
Could you repeat the question for me?
Rochester voters approved a sales tax extension last year, with the majority of a new $50 million vitality fund, economic vitality fund, dedicated to address housing needs. What do you see as the priority for the city-funded housing efforts?
Okay, great question. Rochester very much needs more affordable housing, and this is maybe where I do differ a little bit from my opponent, where affordable housing in downtown are not two things I'd put in the same sentence. Housing, at the end of the day, is something that is a business for a developer, and the most expensive property in the city is going to be in the downtown corridor. So how would I prioritize that money as improving public transportation? If we could do infill housing in the outskirts of Rochester, but provide adequate public transportation for them with those funds, while they might not be living in the same location of where they work, they can at least get there more easily.
Thank you. That is Mark Schluessner. So the next question, which is from online, I want to get one of these in here, we'll go to candidate Schluessner first. What experience do you bring to the task of managing the large budget of the city of Rochester?
Great question. I've been there. Again, I served on the public school board for four years, and we had a similar-sized budget for the school district. It is a complex beast, and it takes a lot of understanding of large numbers. I've been on a number of boards of directors where we're responsible for not as large of a budget, but it brings similar or different conversations. And this is where I think my mindset of being able to look through the countless pages of budgets, it's one of the things I tend to do, being a data-driven person, is I can look at that and look to see where we could have efficiencies, see where things can do overlap, and perhaps be spent differently. It's what I like to do. I believe in efficiency, especially when it comes to spending other people's money. It's important.
Thank you. Candidate Doring.
Yeah, and my, thank you for the question. In my professional life, this is one of the tasks that I do almost on a daily basis. I watch budgets of nonprofits. I've run two nonprofits by myself with a collection of volunteers. I oversaw the budget of a daycare center. I oversaw the budget of a camp, again overseeing two of those entities through the global pandemic. I understand what it means to watch for a budget. I understand what it means to do, to look at limited resources and take those limited resources and try to meet the expectations of the whole. I understand having hard conversations, letting people know that we can't do everything that people want us to do because we're being fiscally responsible, we're being good stewards of the gifts that have been given to us, watching out for other people's money. So I think my experience in the nonprofit sector, as well as my experience on other board of directors, will be an asset on the city council.
Thank you. The next question goes to candidate Doring, and it's from someone who's here tonight. So, describe your leadership style and how you'd work effectively with co-council members and city staff.
Thank you for the question. I'm highly collaborative and laid back simultaneously. I would hope that my future colleagues on the city council would understand that I deploy sarcasm, because I need to do that for myself as a thinking process. It's never done with ill intent or anything like that. In terms of collaboration, I have the ability to work with people from multiple viewpoints and work together and boil down our multiple viewpoints to get a solution that works the best for all of us, which means collaboration and compromise. I am willing to collaborate and compromise as a leader.
Thank you. Candidate Schluessner.
I'd say the same. I'm a very collaborative leader, and when you're in an elected position such as a city council member, you have to understand what governance is. You know, governance isn't necessarily micromanagement of what is going on, but you need to understand all of the details of what the conversation is and have faith in the leaders that you've put in place to lead those areas. You know, Rochester has a number of dedicated people, such as the city administrator, the police chief, the fire chief, and the city attorney. And, you know, part of the responsibilities of a city council member, along with, you know, fiscal responsibility for the budget, is understanding, you know, you don't have supervisory skills over them, which you as an individual, of course, do not, but you need to have a vision with the other council members to see where you want them to go. And it's important to have those discussions during a review process of, okay, maybe this area of the city's not going in a direction we want. Let's have that conversation during a review period and maybe have those hard conversations of, you understand this, that you're passionate, it should go in this direction, but we feel it should go in another direction.
Thank you. The next question is for candidate Schluessner, and it's from The Chamber of Commerce.
Rochester is one of the fastest-growing cities in Minnesota. What is your plan to ensure that our infrastructure and services, public safety, transportation, housing, utilities, can handle this growth while maintaining the city's quality of life?
A great question, and it kind of goes back to, you know, the budget discussion that the city council just had recently. You know, if you look at the overall city budget growth of 10%, you know, a large portion of that being for this question essentially, is public services. You know, the largest piece being for the police department. And that becomes a complex question as well, as while we want to take care of, say, the homeless and the housing needy, we need to be conscious that while we want public safety, we need to take everybody into account. We need to make sure that we want the police and the fire to have the services and the dollars that they need while not making people on the brink of losing their houses lose their houses. So it is a complex situation to understand.
Thank you. Candidate Doring.
Thanks for the question. That's the million-dollar question, right? How do you balance the needs of the community with limited financial resources? I appreciate the hard work that the city council put in this past Monday to help control that property tax levy a little bit, but I think we can do more. I think one key component of being able to manage infrastructure, housing, services to our homeless community is actually on a state level, working with city partners and our elected officials on the state level here in Rochester to pressure the state legislature to look at the LGA formula that is used for disbursements. Right now Rochester receives $40 per citizen, Duluth receives $405 per person. Duluth is shrinking, Rochester is growing. The math simply doesn't make sense. So I would encourage us to work with our elected officials to advocate for more LGA dollars on the state level.
Candidate Schluessner. Oh, I'm sorry. So, so you've both answered the chamber's questions?
We did.
They're giving me a lot of questions here. So the next question will come from The Rochester Post Bulletin, and it will go to candidate Doring first.
Destination Medical Center spending requires approval of the city council as well as the state board. What do you personally consider to be the chief priorities for DMC during the next four years?
To take into account the needs of the citizens of Rochester. I understand a bold vision to move forward for something new and something that will benefit the country and the world, but I don't want anyone to be left behind in that vision. I want to make sure that the city council continues to question Mayo Clinic's plans to make sure that this community is still a great community for our citizens to live, whether that's increasing pedestrian traffic patterns downtown, or creating better bike infrastructure in the downtown corridor, or working, questioning Mayo to work alongside to increase our public transportation system. I just don't want the citizens of Rochester to be left behind, and I think that's the role of the city council.
Thank you. Candidate Schluessner.
I would say something similar as well, where while DMC is generally focused on the downtown core area, when you get out and you talk to the people, a lot of people in our community feel a little bit left, left behind, a little bit left out. And one of the areas that I think would be important from a DMC point of view, not only for the just next four years, but just the future in general, is just more transparency about what they're doing and what their plans are. You know, they've done a nice job of having some meetings, but again, the general public feels a little bit left out in that space. And I think it's important for the city of Rochester to have a better understanding of what their vision is without having to go dig through their website to find out what their vision is.
Thank you, candidate. The next question is from the Rochester League of Women Voters. How, and it goes first to candidate Schluessner, how will you work with the community and the police to promote public safety throughout the city?
Great question. You know, public safety starts with public trust. And one of the things that we did when we were in the school board is there's, of course, the liaisons that are within the schools, and the purpose of them there was, again, to build the trust and the relationships with the students. And I think that's very important, because when two people work together, they tend to understand each other better. It would be encouraging to have the police to get out into the community, just, not from a policing point of view, but just from a community service, hi, I mean, nice to get to know you, points of view. When my dad was on the police department- When my dad was on the police department way back in the '70s and '80s, '90s, that was one of his roles in the downtown areas, just going around to the businesses, building those relationships. And I think that's really important.
Thank you. Question for candidate Doring.
I would agree that relationship building is very important. I appreciate the efforts that our police department make in building those relationships, such as Safe City Nights or the, it used to be Neighborhood Night Out, right? Or showing up to community events like Latino Fest or the Back to School event that was held at Martin Luther King Jr. Park. I appreciate the efforts that the police department is making in building that trust up with our community here in Rochester. I also believe that it's important for the police department to collaborate and work in cooperation with folks who work with populations who distrust the police department the most. So I would love to see more active volunteerism by the RPD at places like The Landing or the Dorothy Daye Center or at the Channel One Food Bank, just to continue to engender that trust.
Thank you. The next question is from a person in our audience tonight, goes first to candidate Doring. With the current council funding a study to put forth a strategic plan for the library, would you support a tax increase to allow the library to keep up with the needs of Rochester's growing population?
So you had asked us to be very lean with our words, right? My answer is yes.
Oh. Candidate Schluessner, same question.
Well, my answer's maybe not as lean as my opponent's. I think that is certainly a good thing, and, you know, one of the things that I think the city needs to do a little bit more, perhaps, is a little collaboration with the other local governments. And, you know, one of the things I thought about when I was on the school board is why there isn't more of a collaborative situation between the public library and the libraries within the schools. Why couldn't one become an extension of the other? Have those conversations been had? You know, when the high school is closed, it's kind of a shame that the libraries sit there unused when they could be open to the public and be a more distributed model. I think it'd be more efficient and a better use of tax dollars in the end.
Thank you. Candidate Doring.
I already answered. I was lean, remember?
You were lean. Oh, you were so lean.
I'm not called lean too often, but I was that time.
Yeah, that just threw me off completely. Well, the question is from online, and we will start with candidate Schluessner. If elected, please describe where you are with respect to supporting public environmental sustainability and carbon reduction projects and why. If you are supportive, what might be done, what might be one such project you might advocate for?
Sustainability is important for the causes that it drives, and I know the city is doing work in that space. There is a sustainability coordinator within the city. I think the thing that we need to be conscious of when we talk about sustainability as well, it's an admirable goal that we need to drive towards. We need to do it in a way that is going to be cost-effective as well. I know there are some folks who have very aggressive goals, and in order to obtain those aggressive goals would result in increase in city spending, and we just need to be conscious of that. What would I be very supportive for? Quite honestly, I'd like to see more use of solar. I tell you, when I travel the world, our use of solar here is kind of sad, quite honestly. You know, I think if there are things that RPU could do, which is technically a piece of the city government, to have rebates, I know they have some for solar, but continue to have those and more for solar installation and retrofit of solar projects.
Thank you. The next question is, and we just answered the online question, the next question, oh, Dan Doring, please take.
Yep. I was going to say, I love this question. Thank you so much for the question.
Sorry.
I don't think there's enough we can do to address environmental concerns, to be quite frank with you. I was excited to attend the city study session yesterday to hear from RPU and their plans to go to more sustainable energy resources by the year 2030, a full 10 years before the state has dictated that it's necessary to do. Those sustainable resources include a mixture of solar and wind. There'll still be some reliance on natural gas, but hopefully we can continue to work that system so we can remove all those harmful energy resources out of our utility grid. What I would champion is electrifying our bus fleet. I know that we have some electric buses here already in our community. The whole fleet should just be electric, should be electric. I don't, there's an expense for that, but I think we should spend it.
Thank you. Next question to candidate Doring first from the League of Women Voters. What is your view on balancing accessible neighborhood parks with larger sports complexes given budget limitations?
Yeah, another huge question, especially since one of the proposed sites for the regional sports complex is in Ward 6, butts up right against some neighbors who expressed a huge concern that the regional sports complex wouldn't meet their needs as a neighborhood. They were confused on whether there would be amenities for them to enjoy there or whether it was just a facility for out-of-town sports tournaments to happen, right? So this is a huge question. I know that we have already gone down the road for the regional sports center, but that's a great example. I would like us to be very intentional when that facility is built to ensure that communities here in Rochester can enjoy that facility just as much as those visiting our community. There's no doubt that parks is a big issue for me. There's a lot of inequity in parks in our community, and that is something I would hope to address as a member of the city council.
Candidate Schluessner.
Great question. So it becomes a question of, you know, again, balancing the large parks with the neighborhood parks. And one of the things that I've enjoyed, and I think the city has done well, is with the, say, development of new neighborhoods and having the park requirements within the neighborhoods. But to share the same concerns is, you know, when we bring a regional sports facility to the city, of being conscious of the neighborhood that it goes into, and it is usable by all of the residents of Rochester, and not just something that's used on the weekends for tournaments that come to town. It's great. I think it's very exciting that the city has the opportunity to have this, because it will bring revenues to the city through tournaments, which is really good. Call me crazy, but I like it when other people bring their money to town to spend here, and we don't have to. But we need to be conscious of where it goes, make sure it doesn't become a burden on the neighborhoods, and the parks that we have within the neighborhoods are, continue to be kept and upgraded within a fiscally responsible way.
Thank you. The next question is from the chamber, and it goes to candidate Schluessner first.
What barriers do you believe exist that might prevent development in Rochester?
Great question. I think it depends upon who you're asking. You know, there's been a lot of concern from developers in building in Rochester, and they see excessive costs and fees for their developments. And, you know, it's probably an unfavorable opinion, but when I was on the school board, I saw how exceedingly difficult it was for us to build some new schools within the city and the process that we had to go through. From listening to the architect and consultant that we had hired who had experience over the Midwest, it wasn't a pleasant experience, and I hear that from developers. So quite honestly, I think one of the barriers is the process that we have doesn't seem to be developer-friendly.
Thank you. Candidate Schluess, uh, Doring.
I think this is where I'm going to differ from my opponent. I appreciate the procedures that are in place for development. I think that we have city staff who studies, who works diligently, and is concerned about development that makes sense for our city, that is appropriate for our city, and that will work well for all residents of our city. Now, we can talk about fees and all those things, but development is expensive. Inflation certainly doesn't help. Inflation, for me, is the biggest barrier. The cost of development in terms of raw materials is the biggest barrier for development in our city.
Thank you. The next question is from the Rochester Post Bulletin.
Does the city need to invest more into arts and culture amenities and programs?
Me?
Candidate Doring.
Okay. I don't know if I should go or wait. So, as a former middle school and high school music teacher, I view the arts as being invaluable. I know that I've been talking about spending a lot of money, but I believe that as a city, we should be supporting arts and culture. There are ways to do that without spending money. Maybe it's waiving fees in public parks so people can have a music festival. Maybe it's waiving fees for the Rochester Civic Theater so that an upstart theater troupe can come in and hold a production. Maybe it's exploring the places to promote art where we're installing public art displays. Let's put some of those in our marginalized communities as well, so those folks can enjoy it, just like the rest of us.
Thank you. Candidate Schluessner.
Yes, absolutely. A wholeheartedly, you're at Rochester is a little bit behind when it comes to arts and culture. You know, what we have here is nice in its quality, but I think for the city of our size and for the community that DMC wants us to become, we need more. And I think if we get creative in how to find the money, like, you know, kind of going to a couple of questions ago of regional sports complex, there's a hotel fee that has certain specific things that it goes to. Why can't we have one of those be the arts entertainment area of Rochester? I think there are ways that we could find money to increase a very important aspect of our community, being there in the cultures.
Thank you. And that concludes the questions portion of our forum. We now move to closing statements, and Don Doring will go first, and you have two minutes.
Thank you so much. Thank you again to the League of Women Voters, the Chamber of Commerce, the Post Bulletin, and the Public Library for hosting tonight's forum. It's been a pleasure to get to know my neighbors in Ward 6. Before the primary, I was able to have over 4,000 voter contacts. Since September 2nd, I have had 1,100 voter contacts, and it's been an absolute honor of my lifetime to listen to our neighbors, to listen to how much they love this city and how they want this city to be loved by all who call it home. Now, there are definite concerns that I've heard. I've heard concerns about property taxes. I've heard concerns about school. I've heard concerns about public safety. I've heard concerns about accessibility. I've heard concerns about senior housing. I've heard concerns about parks. I've heard concerns about bike trails. I've heard concerns just about everything, including a splash pad. And I love hearing these concerns. It fires me up to think that I can be someone who can serve my neighbors, to bring real tangible solutions to their concerns. I never, ever thought I was going to run for public office. I just, it was not on my radar screen, but it has been a life-changing experience for me, and I look forward to serving my neighbors on the city council, representing them, representing Ward 6, but also representing all those who call Rochester home. Thank you.
Thank you. Marc Schluessner.
It has been an outstanding experience. I absolutely agree with that, getting out to talk to the people and hearing the concerns that they have, because it is important that we do build a community for everybody here. You know, I think Rochester is an outstanding place in those regards, where we're a very diverse city, and that is absolutely one of the strengths that we have. But there are parts of our city in that diverse space that isn't as comfortable as this should be, and we need to work on that and doing some of these ideas that we talked about of getting, you know, the police out and building the relationships. Those are some of the things I want to bring to the city council, some innovative ideas like that of how can we take a great city and make it better. Talking to the people has certainly been a great experience, and I continue to learn something new every day as I talk to the people in Ward 6. It's a great ward where the people want what's best for the city, they want what's great for their neighbors, but they want us to hear and understand that they don't have so much money that they can continue to have, you know, 4. some percent property tax increases every year. They want us to do, like they do in their homes, help the neighbor but live within the budget that they have and within the financial constraints that they have. It's important to them. If they could do more, they would, and they feel the city should be the same way. And I absolutely believe the same as well. You know, that's the voice that I want to bring to the city council of watching out for my neighbor, doing what's best for everybody, but doing it within a budget that doesn't break everybody's individual bank. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to thank each of the candidates for participating in tonight's forum. Thank you for your service to the community and for your willingness to participate in the democratic process by running for office. I would like to remind you, the audience, that the views expressed in the forum tonight were those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters Rochester or any partner or sponsor of the forum. Thanks to our partners, the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, the Rochester Post Bulletin, and the Rochester Public Library. Please remember to vote. If you have a question about your polling place, would like to see your sample ballot, or learn more about the candidates, visit vote411.org. To see this forum again, access the forums from the League of Women Voters Rochester website or the Rochester Public Library YouTube channel. The library and the League of Women Voters Rochester post complete, unedited recordings of this forum on their websites. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of this forum may not be posted on candidate websites or social media, I'm sorry, or used for political purposes. Links to the LWV or Rochester Public Library recordings, however, are welcome. Good night, everybody. Thanks for coming. Thank you.[1776.91][1776.91]